We're here for this important discussion about the future of our city.
We're happy to host all of you and we consider it an obligation to help connect voters with potential office holders. A healthy democratic republic requires robust newsrooms and we see every day the value of strong journalism at the local, state, and national levels. I urge all of you to put the same support you have for the politicians of your choice behind your local news organizations, many of them represented here tonight. And I especially urge you, of course, to support the News Sentinel and knoxnews.com in our mission to provide vigorous watchdog journalism. You can subscribe now at knoxnews.com/subscribe for just 99 cents a month. Thank you all for coming tonight and now on to tonight's discussion. All right, we've got to talk fast tonight. Our last forum, we had six candidates. We have 11 tonight, so that's both good and a scary thing. I'm just going to throw this on. All right. Well, hello, everybody. I'm Blake Stevens. I'm a reporter for WAT6 on your side and I'm just tickled that the League of Women Voters keeps giving me this opportunity. I keep messing up, but they extend their grace to me for every event, so we'll get started. Most of you have probably voted in a city council race before, but bear with me while I explain to those who may be unfamiliar how the ballot works to those new to the Knoxville system. It can be confusing. All registered Knoxville voters can mark the ballot for one candidate in each at-large seat, A, B, and C. Only voters who live in District 5 can vote for one candidate running in that race. If you don't know whether or not you live in District 5, you can go to Go...you can download the GoVote TN app. There you can type in your address and your name and then a screen appears with a list of the districts and all of the officials there running. There are cards on the information table that share the app's name and other important information you may need when you go to vote. So again, because of...because there are 11 candidates tonight, we have done two things to help make your choices more clear. Fortunately, we have seated everyone together in their particular race and we even color-coded them, so we've got that figured out. So for example, we'll start here. The at-large seat A, you can see the orange color in front of the candidates there. You've got Lynn Fugit and Charles Lomax. For at-large seat B, you see a green color. That's David Hayes and Janet Testerman. At-large seat C, you see a red color there. That's Amy Midas and Amelia Parker. For...oh, that's not all. You've also got Hubert Fraser Smith, Bob Thomas, and David Williams. And for District 5, you've got Charles Albaoui and Charles Thomas. Got a lot of Charleses there, so. I welcome you all here on behalf of the following nonprofit organizations, of course, the League of Women Voters for Knoxville and Knox County, Centro Hispano, the Knoxville Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, the Knoxville Area Urban League Young Professionals, the Knoxville branch of the NAACP, the National Coalition of 100 Black Women, Greater Knoxville Chapter, and the Knoxville News Sentinel. And of course, we want to thank all the volunteers who helped make this possible. Gail Anderson is keeping time. Where is Gail?
Actually, we don't have Gail. So Sandra Foster.
Sandra Foster. So all eyes on Sandra tonight. All right. Thank you, Sandra. And we have a few folks screening questions tonight. We've got Joyce Feld and Maureen McBride, Candace Halbert and Sherri Casper. All right, so we're about to get started here. I just want to read a few rules before we get started. We'll start with the rules for the audience. Members of the audience, you're encouraged to submit questions for consideration to be presented for candidates' responses throughout the forum. Everyone should refrain from responding in any manner, applause, cheering, booing, or other response. We will ask folks to leave if they disrupt. And that gets really awkward and it makes the night even longer. Candidates, you should stand when speaking so those in the back can see you. Please focus on the issues raised by the questions. Speak only during the time you're allotted and avoid referring to other candidates. And you should note, if I see you've referenced another candidate, I can give that candidate an additional 30 seconds and again, it gets awkward. So then the order of candidates' opportunity to respond will alternate according to an established procedure. I'm going to go ahead and tell you that's random for me. That's my established procedure. The first group of candidates to speak is the group with the name whose birthday is closest to July 4th. Charles Albaoui was closest to July 4th, so your group will go first for opening statements. We'll get to those in just a second. When we proceed, we'll then go to the group to their left and we'll give everybody a chance to speak. Opening words, response to questions, and your closing remarks are all 60 seconds. None of the candidates have received any advance notice of any of these questions. Instead, questions will be submitted in writing by you all during this forum. Volunteers, there's one here. Are you on by yourself taking questions?
No.
Oh, oh, there's several. I'm sorry. One, two, three. So just raise your hand. Four. So just raise your hand if you want to submit a question. They have note cards and pencils as well. They will then get them to the screeners and get them up here to me. So just raise your hand and a volunteer will do that. And like I mentioned, before questions are shared, they're screened by these four to make sure they're relevant, they're not redundant, they're not biased, that sort of thing. And all candidates tonight will have an opportunity to respond to every question. Responses should be confined to the issues raised by the questions. After the forum, candidates can share campaign materials with the audience by placing them on a table at the back of the room. Let's begin. All right. We're going to start with Charles Albaoui. I've said it every way you can say it. We're going to start with you. 60 seconds, opening statement.
Hello, I'm Charles Albaoui. I'm running for the City Council, District 5, and I want your vote for one reason. I want for my neighbor what I want for myself. I'm here to look out for you all. In my experience, I'm an attorney. I represent children. It's my job to look out for their best interests. It's my job to make sure they get their needs met and I want to do the same thing as your city council representative. I want to make sure your families are safe, your children are safe, and that every citizen has the opportunity to be happy, successful, and well-informed about the political process. And that's why I'm running. What makes me qualified is my experience representing children. I see the ins and outs of daily life in Knoxville, in the legal process, every day. And it gives me the understanding I need in order to look out for you all and make sure you get what you need. So thank you all.
Yes, I'm also an attorney, as my competition is as well. I've practiced for 30 years also. I've done guardian ad litem, juvenile court, lots of appointed cases and lots of pro bono work, so my competition is exactly right about the qualifications sometimes that are similar between being an advocate for the city council and as an attorney. I'm also a former city councilman. I represented this district back in 2011, eight years ago. It's when Bob Becker stepped down for personal reasons. I was during the term of Daniel Brown, also a long-term activist actually in my community, involved with the Neighborhood Association, Greenway Coalition. I was on the CAT board for five years. Later on, Metropolitan Planning Commission, as it was called then. Currently, I'm on one of the Legacy Parks Conservation Boards, so I've been active for a long time and I'm to a large degree running on my record and think that I can use...
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to at-large seat C. We'll start with David Williams. You have 60 seconds.
Thank you so much, David Williams. It's an honor and a privilege to be here. I'm a lifelong Knoxville resident, fourth generation Pond Gap resident. I've been a math tutor for 40 years and that's tutoring students from seven to 70 years old all over Knoxville and Knox County. I go to the home, work with the parents and the students, learn quite a bit about the neighborhoods in the city and the county. I think that qualifies me to be able to sit down and talk to neighborhoods, be a go-between between them and the city to get things done. I have a bachelor of science degree, a master's degree, and an education doctorate degree, which shows I have a love of learning and I like to learn all the time. And like I say, I feel like the Lord's given me the ability to sit down and relate to people because when you come for city council, those issues are part of your life. You need to have courtesy and respect given to you and you need to have your wishes taken into account. That's very important and I want to earn your trust and earn your vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you very much. Ooh, okay. My name is Bob Thomas. Seat C is what I'm seeking. And first of all, I want to say, I'm just so thrilled there's this many people here. To be honest with you, that's quite a statement about all of you, that you care because if you look at the election process and it's difficult to get people out to vote across America these days and I don't know why because we need to be involved and I appreciate all of you all being here. I've been involved in Knoxville all my life. Going back to when I was very, very young, involved in the community, been involved in over 12 different boards. I'm on the Dogwood Arts Festival Board, Young Williams Animal Center, Arts and Cultural Alliance. I was several Policy Center Board, five years, their president for two years. I was on county commission for four years, one year as vice president. One of the things I met about county commission, when I started to run, I called every commissioner and only one called me back. And I was running. Can you imagine what the average guy? I called every single person back.
Thank you.
And I did over 45 consecutive monthly meetings.
All right, that's time. Thank you so much. Hubert Fraser Smith, you have 60 seconds.
Thank you. Good evening. For a radio broadcaster, this is frightening to see your audience. I'm going to quote from Knox 10 Today, K-N-O-X-T-N-today.com. And this is written by Sandra Clark, July 4th. "If the upcoming election were a job interview, the candidate with the most impressive credentials for city council at large would be Hubert Smith. His preparation: Knoxville native, career radio broadcaster, multi-year member of public transit board, and actually rides buses; secretary of Knoxville-Knox County Public Building Authority; graduate of Leadership Knoxville 2000; CAC Leadership 1999; graduate of Knoxville Police Department, Citizens Academy, Fire Department, District Attorney General; currently Advisory Board for East Tennessee PBS; and founder and host of the monthly networking group, The Motley Crue at Crown Plaza." So I'll stop before I get stopped. Thank you.
Amelia Parker, 60 seconds.
Hi, hello, everyone. My name's Amelia Parker and I'm running for seat C. I grew up in Knoxville, grew up in South Knoxville, graduated from South Dole and went on to the University of Tennessee where I got my bachelor's before going on to law school at American University in Washington, DC. And I'm bringing all of this education and experience back with me to run for city council because I'm concerned about the disparities that I continue to see in my city and the growth in those disparities, whether it's in terms of income, whether it's in terms of what the quality of our schools are in our neighborhoods. And I want to help be a voice to push for equity in Knoxville and to address these issues that are causing 42% of our black American community in Knoxville to live in poverty. Over 26% of our broader Knoxville community living in poverty. I believe it's urgent that we address this immediately.
Amelia, thank you. Amy Midas, candidate for seat C.
Hello, thank you. My name is Amy Midas. My husband and I moved to Knoxville 22 years ago this month. We have two daughters and I love Knoxville. It has provided a great opportunity, great quality of life for me and my family. I've been involved in my Neighborhood Association as its president for six years. I'm on the Neighborhood Advisory Council. I'm on the Public Property Naming Committee and I'm on the Advisory Council for Rico Knoxville. Like many of you, I have worked with city council members and I know the importance of having locally engaged representation, people who will work with you to solve your problems, to address problems, to create solutions and compromises. And when a tough decision is needed to be made, that they will educate themselves on all parts of the issue and make a judgment, a good decision for the quality and the well-being of our residents in for Knoxville. That's why I'm running for city council. I hope I earn your support tonight and thank you for being here.
Right now, on to our candidates for at-large seat B. We'll start with Janet Testerman.
Good evening. I'm Janet Testerman. Thank you so much for being here. I am a Knoxville native. I feel like I've spent my entire life being an ambassador for the city. I own my own small business for nearly a decade. I've worked for two of our city's largest employers, one right here with EW Scripps and also with Scripps Networks Interactive. And now I head up Young Williams Animal Center, really moving the needle and making changes in animal welfare across our community. I've served on a number of boards and organizations and so many of our city's worthy causes. And I'm really excited to take that leadership, to take that knowledge, to take that experience, to serve all of you and to serve all of our residents across this great city on city council. So thank you for letting me be here and look forward to it.
All right, David Hayes.
Hello, my name is David Hayes. I'm running for a city council at large, seat B. I am a proud member of the city council movement, along with Amelia Parker and Charles Albaoui. And I've been an activist and community organizer for years. I haven't joined any boards. I haven't been at the top of the organizations. I've been at the bottom in the grassroots, directly dealing with people and helping people with their needs, from fighting for equitable schools, fighting for a more equitable budget, fighting back against gentrification and all these things. And it's become clear that Knoxville isn't working for all people. So right now, this campaign is about building in Knoxville for all. It's about transformation in our city, making sure that all people have access to good jobs and living wages. All people have access to affordable housing. All people have access to a safe and healthy community and all people have access to democracy. Again, I want a Knoxville for all, where all communities have democracy and human rights. Thank you.
All right, on to at-large seat A. We'll start with Charles Lomax.
Good evening and thank you all very much for being here and thank you to all of the organizations that have come together to make this happen. My name is Charles Lomax and I am a candidate for a city council at large, seat A. And I am a Knoxville native, born and raised, grew up in East Knoxville, moved out west, graduated from Karnes High School, went on to the University of Tennessee Knoxville, went and moved away to Atlanta for a few years, got my masters from the Morehouse School of Religion, and just graduated last year with my doctorate from Emory. And I am grateful to have the opportunity to run for this office and to represent the city as a whole. I, for the past seven years, sat on our Metropolitan Planning Commission where I got experience in land use and zoning. And I've also, for the past seven years, served as pastor of the St. John Missionary Baptist Church, which is in Alcoa. And so I am truly grateful, just again, to have this opportunity and would ask that you would trust me with your vote as we go forth to move this city to greater and higher heights. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lynn Fugit.
Thank you. I am Lynn Fugit and I'm running for at-large, seat A. Why I'm running is because the issues that face any elected body are difficult. They are not easily solved by quick soundbite answers and it takes thoughtful leadership of bringing people together to make hard decisions. I have a 30-year track record of doing that in Knoxville. I was on the Board of Education and chair of the Board of Education. I ran the Nine Counties, One Vision process. I've been a banker for 25 years. Actually, I shaved a few off, so y'all don't know how old I am. And I'm currently the chief executive officer of the Girl Scouts of the Southern Appalachians. So my heart is in service and making hard decisions to move our community forward and that's why I'm running. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, candidates. We're going to move on to our first question from our audience. First question reads, "Being a member of city council calls for experience with public service, being familiar with public policy, and knowledge of current issues facing the city. What in your background specifically qualifies you for this position?" We're going to start with the big pool of candidates, at-large seat C, and we'll start with Mr. Smith.
I gave a little bit in the beginning and I guess I'll elaborate a little further. One thing I had the opportunity to do back in 1996 was to see the and participate in the last effort to unify city and county government and that was the last time that was done. I had an opportunity to see a charter created from an idea and a concept to actually being on the ballot but obviously defeated. As my experience says, I have been involved in issues directly relating to the city of Knoxville, the academies, fire, police, Attorney General. I serve on the Public Building Authority. If you're unfamiliar with that, we do a lot of work. So I think I'm very knowledgeable about things that are going in the city and I'm able to serve on the city council. Plus, I think I can compromise and get five votes because if you can't get five votes, you can't get anything. And I think I have the ability to do that and work with my fellow council members to get legislation passed.
All right, thank you. Ms. Midas.
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, I was the president for my Neighborhood Association for six years. During that process, we re-zoned our neighborhood and I'm proud to say that we had 100% of the people of my neighborhood who were in agreement with the rezone. I think that's pretty spectacular. Land issues can be kind of contentious at some point. I've also been on the Neighborhood Advisory Council. It's a group of neighborhood leaders from across the city that review policy and administration changes. The mayor often brings these policies to the advisory council for feedback and we've worked together to try to affect that change. We've been representatives for our neighborhoods to try to give advice to the administration to make it agreeable for all parts of our city. And I think that that's essential to be on city council since we are the voice of the people. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Thomas.
Okay, there we are. I've learned you've got to talk faster on this. Okay. I've been involved in business all my life in Knoxville, from 17 years old when I got into broadcasting. Hockey business, I brought hockey back to Knoxville in 1988. I did over 300 games at the Civic Coliseum, brought in over $25 million of business, I mean money, into the economy of Knoxville. I was on the Development Corporation Board, which is the board for two years, the board that really brings business to Knox County and to Knoxville. Also, I keep talking fast. There are so many boards I've been involved in to do their budgets. Several Policy Center for Handicapped Adults. If you've never been there and seen what they do for the citizens of Knox County, I was on the board for five years and two years as their president. We took them from where they were almost broke to where they were completely out of debt in just two or three years. So I've been involved with this community for a long time and I know business and I also know how to do a budget. $850 million for Knox County.
Thank you. Ms. Parker.
I have about 20 years of experience of working to...with communities to draft legislation and move it through the process of approval. 20 years ago, I was the legislative coordinator for the State of Tennessee for Amnesty International and I served in that role for several years. Then, once I moved to Washington, DC, I worked for the Center for Human Rights and Humanitarian Law, where also worked on large budgets funded by the State Department. And then, back here in Tennessee, worked for a statewide group called SOCOM, Statewide Organizing for Community Empowerment. And I really value that experience because it is a member-run organization and so my job was to help members understand our budget enough to develop it themselves and also to pass, you know, to draft policy that would be introduced in the state legislature or, you know, even local initiatives. So a lot of experience both with the budgets and also with legislative work.
Thank you. Mr. Williams.
Over 20 years ago, we formed a neighborhood organization in Pond Gap to address a number of issues. It was unwanted development, cut-through traffic and so forth. And I made a pattern and a habit the last six, seven, eight years to visit other neighborhoods on a regular basis around the city to share ideas and things we put across. I feel like on city council, I've got the experience and the knowledge of what's going on in different neighborhoods to come and form a consensus and be able to solve problems. You have to be active. You have to go and seek out the people because a lot of people tell me, "We're frustrated. We feel like you go for a city council, you're ignored or you come up with a plan and there are 50 million reasons why we can't do it." Traffic is a big issue through neighborhoods, it's just not being addressed. Like I say, you need someone on there that's familiar with the problems, that's been before city councils and planning commission and meetings many times to express your viewpoint. I feel like sometimes I'm a pest, but I'm a good-natured pest. I want to do what's good for the people and I want to be your spokesman for your neighborhood on city council.
All right, thank you. We're going to move on to candidates for District 5. Before we move on, whoever, which candidate that ball cap belongs to, do you mind just sticking that under the table? Thank you. It's a...all right, thank you. We're going to move on to Mr. Charles Albaoui. What in your background specifically qualifies you for this position?
So I was born and raised in Knoxville. I lived in a multi-generational extended family household out in Karnes. I grew up poor. I understand what the issues that most of these citizens, most of our citizens, face on a daily basis. But actual professional experience, I worked for Sarah Moore Green Elementary through Project Grad as a teacher's aide. I worked with the Boy Scouts and the Civics Committee, helping them. I've worked with Lonsdale United for Change on Zoning Issues. I'm currently in the process of working with the Lonsdale Residents Association and helping them develop a new Lonsdale Neighborhood Association. And most importantly, you know, I've worked with the Knoxville Area Urban League Young Professionals, helping register voters. We did that for two years. That's what I did when I found out I passed my bar license and that's what I did when I graduated University of Tennessee College of Law. I just want people to be informed about the political process. I want them to have their say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas.
Yes. As I mentioned before, I'm actually a former member of the city council, so I've been there, folks, and it was a good experience for me. It was eight years ago. I learned a lot and also accomplished some things. A couple of things that just come to mind. Hillside Rich Top Protection Plan was passed, which does some, I think, reasonable things on zoning. It also prevents flooding. Curbside Recycling was passed when I was on the city council. And I...that's been eight years ago, but since then, I've been on the Metropolitan Planning Commission. I'm on one of the Legacy Park Boards right now and also Broadway Corridor Task Force. And I've got a plethora of other experience. I was head of the Greenway Commission or Coalition for about eight years. I was on the CAT board at a time that we were putting bicycle racks on all the buses and trying to get linear parks and trying to do something to kind of coalesce the bus service with the Greenway and bicycle trails.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the at-large, seat A, with Chris Lomax. Charles Lomax. Sorry about that.
I've been called worse. I would say that one of the things that qualifies me for this office that I am seeking is the fact that I have a heart for people and I have a heart for service. My entire life has been dedicated to just that, working for a number of different nonprofits and even serving in my capacity as a pastor. One of the primary things that I am charged to do is simply listen. And too often, we have people in government that don't or aren't willing to listen to those that they represent. And so I want to let everyone know that I am here to listen. I served on our Metropolitan Planning Commission for the past seven years and one of the things that that put me in a position to do was to listen to a number of our citizens that came before us with various concerns based on how their property or how the land around them was going to be used. And so I think that's one of the major things that qualifies me and the fact that I'm just willing to sit down and to listen and to share with the experiences that everyone has.
And that's Charles, not Chris.
Charles, not Chris.
All right, Lynn Fugit.
Thank you. I think what qualifies me for this job is that the biggest job of the city council is setting priorities for the city through the budget process. And I have eight years of working on the Knox County Schools budget, which was over $450 million. As a former mayor once said, "The job of government is not choosing between good things and bad things, it's prioritizing all good things that need to be done." That is hard. It takes a lot of thoughtful compromise and listening to people. The other thing that I would say that qualifies me is one of the things we talk a lot about is redevelopment and affordable housing. Well, in 1990, I helped start the first affordable housing nonprofit in Knox County, which was Knox Housing Partnership, now Knox Home Source. I also helped create the Affordable Housing Trust Fund at the East Tennessee Foundation. So I understand affordable housing. I have lent money for homes and businesses.
Thank you.
And I'm done.
At-large, seat B. We'll start with David Hayes.
So I have committed my life to empowering workers, families, and the community. Now, I'm only 26 years old, so it's not as long as some other folks up here, but I've empowered, I've committed my life to this. So I've been a part of numerous different community organizations and everything, most times, everything comes back to policy. You know, whether you're working within the criminal justice system, whether you're working to get, make sure people have access to services and housing, whether you're working to make sure people have access to jobs, so many of these things come back to housing. to housing. And so many of these, not housing, so many things come back to policy. And so many of these things come back to the city government. And it's clear that the establishment and status quo is not working for most communities in Knoxville. It is not working for all folks. We don't need folks who's going to go into office and do the same old, same old. We need folks who are going to transform this institution so it works for everybody. So instead of just a few people making decisions about the budget, we include everybody, right? So instead of a few people being included about development decisions and things like Rico and whatnot, we include the entire city. So I'm going to transform the city. And I believe that's what makes me qualified to be in city council.
Thank you. Janet Testerman?
I think what qualifies me is I've owned my own business. And so I know what it means to support entrepreneurs. And it's not just about starting new business. It's about helping them keep, being sustainable long-term, keeping the lights on. I've also worked for two of our largest employers. I see the contributions they make in the communities they call home. I also know how critical it is to recruit top talent and diversity and what that brings to a city. Also, leading a nonprofit, understand that servant leadership is the pillar of any community. And that is something I've really given my life to over the years. I've spent the last many months meeting with, with so many of the city's directors and top leadership to understand what the challenges are, what the issues are, what the plans are for the city and to really take the time to understand moving forward what my representation would look like on city council.
All right, thank you. Our next question, we'll start with at-large seat B. And here is the question. How will you ensure that you learn the opinions of your constituents and how will you reconcile the diversity of those opinions and the actions that you take? We will go right back to you, Janet. How, yeah, you were busy sitting. No, I understand. How will you, how will you ensure that you learn the opinions of your constituents and how will you reconcile the diversity of those opinions and the actions that you take?
You know, I've really taken the time. I think part of this process is you're not going to be a good candidate if you don't take the time to listen. And so I have spent a lot of time and continue to spend a lot of time listening and learning. I don't pretend like I have, that I know all of the answers. But to understand what the issues are, I don't believe that there's a cookie cutter approach to anything, that every part of the city has different needs. It has different issues. And so you can't just approach it in one way. So to really sit down, to listen, to understand what their needs are, I think that is critical in this process. I can't be a good voice. I can't be a good leader for everyone across the city if I don't. And so to really understand what's top of mind, what's at their hearts, what they want to see, where do they want to see our city in five years, 10 years, 20 years, and to really look at that and start to think about a long-term strategic plan for Knoxville.
All right, Mr. Hayes?
Yes. So I would say, listening is not enough. It is not enough for folks in this room to vote for your city council folks every two to four years and have them make all these decisions for you without your consent. It's not enough. It's not enough for one person, the mayor, to make a budget for nine people in city council to pass it. A budget of over $300 million that affects almost 200,000 people in this city, right? It's not enough just for folks, just for 10 people to make that decision for all, for all the people in Knoxville, right? We should have democratic processes where people can participate in governance. We should have democratic processes where people can participate in the creation of the budget, where people can participate in the development of the communities, where people can participate in the priorities and how funds are distributed. So it's not enough just to listen. We must democratize the city so people, regardless of their documented or undocumented, registered to vote or not registered to vote, homeowner or homeless, can actually equally participate in the city and participate in decisions that affect their lives.
All right, thank you. That question now goes to candidates for at-large seat A. We'll start with you, Ms. Fugit.
Did you say it again?
Yeah, sure. How will you ensure that you learn the opinions of your constituents
Got it.
and reconcile the diversity?
Thank you. So I think the easiest way to ensure hearing what citizens want is to continue, is to continue doing what I've been doing while campaigning at large. You have to go out to neighborhood meetings. You have to make yourself available by telephone. My telephone number right now is 566-7414. So if there's something you want to talk to me about, call me. That's how you make yourself available. You also, you talked about reconciling. That's the hard part. That, that is, because oftentimes, people in our community see things differently. If everybody saw things the same way, it'd be very easy to govern. But you have to be willing to study the issue from the experts, listen to what your constituents want, and then make the hard decisions and be willing to stand by them. And I have experience doing that.
All right, thank you. We're moving on to at-large seat C. We'll start with Amy Midas.
Charles.
I got your name wrong and now I have skipped you entirely. Y'all get used to this. Sorry about that.
I try. To answer the question, I, I think that it goes and comes down to two words, availability and accessibility. I think that we as representatives of the city need to be available and accessible. I believe it was Mr. Thomas that said he tried to call individuals and they didn't return his call. And so I think that we as representatives of Knoxville need to be both available and accessible to those to whom we are accountable and who elect us. And I think that we need to be willing to be present, to be active, to be involved. And so at all of the neighborhood meetings, community meetings, and anywhere where voice is needed. We are here to represent the entirety of the city. And too often, that has not been the case. And so we want to make sure that we're lending voice to those that feel as though they are voiceless, to those that have been underrepresented. And so if elected, I will continue to do so. And being available is something that I've made to my congregation and that is something that I would do to the entire city because I want to be accessible to those who would trust me with their vote.
Thank you. All right, now on to Amy Midas, at-large seat C candidate.
Thank you. So I feel like I've been on a little bit of job training for the past six years. Since becoming neighborhood president, I've started out with my neighborhood. I've been involved with a lot of neighborhoods across the city and affecting policy for the past six years. One thing I've learned is that you need to be a consensus-building leader. And that goes out and makes certain that you listen to people, listen to all people's opinions and valuing that. Since entering the campaign, I've been door-knocking and it's really been great to connect with so many people all across the city and hearing their issues and their concerns and their beliefs. I definitely feel like I'm running on a campaign of one Knoxville where we reach out across the city and we try to unite each other because we really have a great city that we can build on. And we need to be proud of our city as an all, as an entirety. Going forward, I'll make certain that I reach back out to all the leaders of the community and make certain they know that I'm there and reaching out to them regularly and asking for their input on my, on the decisions that need to be made on city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
There you go. Okay. Don't count that off. You know, when I first got elected Knox County Commissioner, I'd been very frustrated because what I talked about, you couldn't reach your commissioners. So I was determined that I was going to be accessible. So for the next 45 months in a row, I had monthly meetings all across Knox County. I represented all 460,000 people in Knox County, so I should be accessible. I made that effort. This is not a promise. This is what I did. And if you notice, the at-large commissioners aren't doing it anymore. I went out every single month and met with the people and found out what their problems were, what they were concerned about. And this is a very large county. And that's what you have to do. You know, it's not about what I want. It's about what the citizens want. And that's the thing that I wanted to represent. And that's the same thing I will carry to city council. We will go out, we will find out every single month what people want, what their concerns are, and we will be accessible.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
I'm going to continue to go door-to-door like I'm doing now. It, it really gets you in the gut when you go to the door of an elderly person. I'm the only one that's talked to them in a week. So I get a lot of their frustrations and help calm their fears and everything. Other times, I'll knock on the door and nobody will come. I'll leave the literature on the porch and back off. Then I hear somebody, "Come back on to talk." Be another elderly person, usually afraid of someone, a stranger, politician. I wouldn't go to the door either. But anyway, you get a great rapport and a lot of these people can't go to a meeting, city council or planning commission. So I'm going to continue that. Hopefully, I'll win, but I'm going to, I'll make a promise to you. I'm going to still go around the city when I can, door-to-door and get to people what, what they want to be done. You can reach me on my Facebook page, David Williams for City Council. And finally, I want to get the youth involved. On council, I'll take a high school class, say a government class, once a month, come to a council meeting and address issues of the agenda. Right now, city council poses the agenda on a Friday for the Tuesday meeting. This should be done at least a week in advance so that class can study the issue and really grill the council members with some good questions. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Tough question. Ensure, learn from opinions, reconcile diversity of opinions. I don't know that anybody can reconcile the diversity of opinions. I think that's impossible. How do you ensure that you get the opinions of everybody? You try the best that you can. You never will, okay? Politics is a two-way street. None of us can sit up here and say we can do it all because we can't. It takes people from the other side. What I can promise you that I will do is I will study, I will learn, I will listen, I will reach out as best that I can, and I will not be afraid to take the tough vote and take the spears and arrows that come with it. That's why you want me, that's why you're electing me. So that's what I stand here to do. So that's what I will promise to do.
Thank you. Ms. Parker?
Hi. So the first part of the question, I have similar answer to what everyone else has said. And that's make yourself available. We, the city council job is a part-time job. So you should see me at least 20 hours a week, not just, you know, a couple of hours at the city council meeting. That means coming to you and not necessarily you coming to me all the time. Also, my phone number is out there too, 865-851-8561. Feel free to call me. My number's on the website. In terms of reconciling the diversity of opinions, it really depends on what the issue is. There are some questions that you can ask ahead of time. How does this issue impact health and safety? Is there an urgency to one person's issue over another? How does it impact the rights of those involved? Are there issues, issues of equity? Is this a development issue requested in an area of town that hasn't received development in a while? Those are some questions that can be asked.
Thank you. All right, for District 5, we're going to start with Mr. Thomas.
I'm not going to make very many promises during the campaign, but there's three that I will make. Accessibility is one. I'm going to work hard, always have. Third one, I will encourage civility in all my dealings. And accessibility is number one. I think you start at the grassroots level. You start at your neighborhood groups. I've been a member of the Lincoln Park Neighborhood Association for, ever since I moved into the neighborhood in 1992. Folks, that's where the discussion's being made and that's where people is being affected. And the police department will come in and you can talk directly to them. You can talk to each other. You can figure out strategies for your neighborhood. As far as a concrete example of accessibility and encouraging participation, when I was on the Greenway Coalition back in the 90s, that's when Greenways weren't so popular and people had a lot of questions about them. But we actually would go into the neighborhoods first and engage the people.
Thank you. Mr. Albaoui?
So the first part is how. How will I do it? Well, we have social media now. That's one way. We can have surveys and polls to reach out to people. Takes five seconds. Canvas, door-knock, talk to the people in the neighborhood most affected by it. I said, "Talk to the people most affected by it." Third thing, town halls. We have to have meetings that are accessible to all the neighborhoods, not just the people that can come Tuesday afternoons for the city council meeting. Okay? How do we reconcile it? Well, we reconcile the same way I do in court every day. A best interest analysis. We have to weigh the factors. We have to listen to the neighborhoods, the neighbors most impacted by the decision. We have to listen to the business interests. We have to listen to nonprofits. We have to listen to the community and hear all sides on the issue and make a tough decision. Some people are going to be affected negatively. We have to do everything to reduce that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next question, we're going to start with at-large seat A candidates in here. And we will start with Charles Lomax. I'm getting there. All right, question to you is, "One of the most important responsibilities of council is to pass an annual budget for the city that funds many competing interests with finite resources. Have you examined the budget and how will you approach balancing these competing needs?"
Thank you very much for the question. I have examined the budget. I was actually at the mayor's luncheon when she announced what the budget was. And I think that it's very important for us to take a look at where those needs are. I think that there were many things within the budget that made sense. I'm grateful that some of our law enforcement officers are getting, excuse me, allergies, are getting a pay raise. It's an extremely dangerous job and I'm grateful that that's going there. But I think we also need to take a look at the least, the lost and the last. And so I would love to see more money going toward things that will be beneficial for affordable housing, things to help our homeless population that is ever-growing. And I think that we need to collectively as a city really examine what our concerns are and what our needs are because where our money is speaks to where our hearts are. And so we can't say that we're concerned about X, Y, or Z if we're not focusing our attention there. And so I'm looking forward to working with the mayor, whoever that may be, so that we can have a budget that is successful for our entire city.
Thank you. Ms. Fugit?
Thank you. So as I said before, the, the job of creating the budget is decide, is prioritizing what is important. I think the very first thing that I would like to do if I'm elected to city council is encourage a mayor to, to come up with a plan for the city of Knoxville. It would make decision-making a lot easier if the community helped set the priorities for the city of Knoxville. Absent that, you, you have to do what you always do when you create a budget. There's X amount of money. You have to look at law enforcement, economic development, the affordable housing issues. I have some ideas on how we can spur economic development down the corridors of Broadway, Magnolia and Chapman Highway to help build on some of the job creation and the tax revenue that's been generated in the city of Knoxville, the downtown core. Tax revenue is the only way we pay for things. We've got to figure out a way to spur sales tax revenue and property tax revenue.
Thank you. All right, on to at-large seat B candidates. We'll start with Mr. Hayes.
So for the past, so, testing, testing. All right, so for the past few years, I've been engaged in the budget process because so many folks aren't able to make it out to those meetings. I thought it was important to make sure I'm out there to give the community a voice.
They're not going to cheat your time.
Siri, turn on the thing here.
Check, check.
Testing. There it goes. There it goes.
Cool.
All right, you have a question?
It's about the budget. I'm good, I'm good. I have a lot to say about the budget in case you haven't noticed. So I've been engaged in the budget process for the past few years and it's clear that the budget is not reflective of human rights. I've already talked about how it's not a democratic process and how people aren't engaged in it. But you look at the budget itself and you look at social services, right, the things that, you know, the things that we need to uplift folks and make, to make sure we can actually grow our tax base so we can get working-class folks up on their feet and make sure that black and brown communities get what they deserve, what we historically have been denied from the city from development. You know, when you look into the budget, you see, you see, it's not, it's not equitable where money is going. So you would think that we would properly invest in community organizations. Central Espinios, a great organization. Sli Svene, I think I saw Sli Svene's in the house. Great organization. There are so many organizations in our city who are, who are tackling the root causes of crime and violence, right? Who are actually, they're, they're in the grassroots. You know, they're, they're getting just over a million dollars in the budget, right? Our social services, you know, gets about, like, it's like 8% of the budget when you count like the CAC.
The Affordable Housing Fund, which over the past many years has contributed to more, almost 600 units across our community, and we continue to be committed and put money into that fund. Also, our law enforcement and providing the tools and resources, benefits, pay that they need to be able to recruit. So as part of that, we spent, you know, with the corridors, with South Knoxville, $109 million, city dollars, and on the South Knoxville, $55 million. And Central, we're doing the Magnolia Avenue corridor to really enhance the city across these communities so we can recruit new business, so we can, we can create an infrastructure for those communities and keep the integrity of our communities to help people thrive and across our city.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to move on to our candidates for the fifth districts. We'll start with Mr. Al Bally.
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. "One of the most important responsibilities of council is to pass an annual budget for the city that funds many competing interests with finite resources. Have you examined the budget and how will you approach balancing these competing needs?"
Yes, I have looked at the budget. I think the focus should be on addressing four areas: poverty, substance abuse, violence, and mental health. These issues are correlated. They are connected to one another. You cannot solve one without solving the other. The budget has to be focused on addressing these issues. That means prioritizing affordable housing, working with nonprofits that do that, like Menvilla, like Family Promise, making sure they have access to the funds they need to ensure good services. What we need to do is look at community schools, the free breakfast and lunch program through the CAC. Make sure that we can reach families and children preemptively so we're not addressing these issues after the fact in the legal system. So I would prioritize social services over everything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
Yes, I agree with Mr. Al Bally almost across the board on just what he said. And as far as being familiar with the budget, I was familiar with it. I went to all the budget hearings from beginning to end. I thought it, it was a well-balanced budget. Personally, I would like to see more for the Affordable Housing Fund and for the, the block grants for the homeless as well. The problem is always, how big is the pie and what do you do with it? Because we want well-paid employees, we want infrastructure. The way you do that is you take blighted property in the city and you get it back on the tax rolls to make the pie bigger so there's more to divide up. Tax incremental financing has been a good tool when judiciously applied. The pilots, payment in lieu of taxes, have been a good thing when scrutinized and carefully applied. So I will work at expanding the pie and increasing some of the social services that Mr. Al Bally spoke of.
All right, thank you. Now on to the candidates for at-large seat C. We will start with Amelia Parker.
Yes, I'm also very familiar with the budget and followed the budgeting process this year. One thing that stood out to me is that our finance director, Jim York, who's retiring, reported that our fund balance has been as low as $3 million in the past and as high as $93 million. Currently, we're expecting it to be about $77 million. Also, our borrowing power has been held back this year. And part of that, we learned at the mayor's announcement, is, is because some folks have been talking about a baseball stadium. When I ran in 2017, there were 2,000 people on an affordable housing waiting list. This year, I've heard 3,000. So putting a couple of hundred units, you know, creating a couple of hundred units a year is not enough. We have to move with urgency to solve our affordable housing crisis, and I agree with candidate Al Bally that we've got to address all of those issues at once.
All right, thank you. Hubert Smith?
Thank you. I did attend the budget hearings. I do know who are the department heads and the directors, and those are the people that are tasked with carrying out the budget. And so in terms of balancing competing needs, those are the people that I would go to first. The hard work is not done in the mayor's office. The hard work is done amongst the worker bees. I would like to just go back to something that was said earlier by my opponent, lest she misspoke. I will give you more than 20 hours a week. City council may be part-time pay, but it's a full-time job. I'll give you a full-time job for the part-time pay, so you can count on me for more than 20 hours a week if you elect me.
We're going to move on to Amy Midas.
Yeah, so I also attended some of the budget meetings. But the one thing I would do on city council is I would make certain that I started in October. The budget meetings are in January, but I'd make sure I'd start in October, meeting with the department heads, finding out what their needs are, and talking to the mayor before the budget hearings. Because on city council, we don't have line item veto. We can only support or reject the budget. So the real work happens early on in preparation for that budget and making certain the needs of the community are being heard by the mayor. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll now move on to Mr. Williams.
I'm a strong advocate of private enterprise. I think-
Excuse me, it looks like we've-
It felt, it felt short, but I thought, I don't have the time clock, so.
We're going to let her finish. We're going to let you finish your thought, and then we'll get to Mr. Williams. Is that right?
Okay. So in order to provide some more services, things that are important to me is I want to make certain that we do have affordable housing. That's becoming a bigger issue in our city. I want to make certain that our police force have the support that they need to recruit new people, that it's a good job, that people will stay there. I'm tired of seeing our community officers leave after five years and going to Oak Ridge or going someplace else. I want to make certain that in order to do this, though, we have to make certain we focus on economic development and building our budget so that we have the opportunity to be able to expand these social services and needs of our community.
All right, Mr. Williams, we won't cut you short. Go ahead.
I'm a strong advocate of private enterprise. I believe in many cases, that can do a better job than the government. We need strong leadership to bring good jobs to Knoxville. Growing up in the 60s, we lost out on getting a Ford Motor plant here. The Talladega Rest Track should have been near the airport. We lost out on a Yale Lock plant and a Piedmont hub. So we need proper leadership and good leadership. Also, we need to listen to our police officer. I'll give you an example in our neighborhood. Our police officer, Zerillo, comes to our meetings each month. He was an MP in the Marine Corps. He gave us some really good traffic calming ideas, really inexpensive. Now he's trying to get the city to put these into play. Also, some years back, we had a sidewalk forced down our neighborhood. Nobody in the neighborhood wanted it. We already had two in that area. We tried to get the city to say, "Okay, if you're going to build a sidewalk, we can save three-fourths of the cost if you put it behind the businesses in this particular block on Sutherland." It would open up this nice area to benches, area where you could walk, have flowers, learn something about the neighborhood. And if, you're old as I am, you remember when they built the promenade downtown. That was my idea. But the city, we couldn't convince them to follow through on that. So you need me on city council.
Mr. Thomas?
Thank you. You know, Jim York, the finance director, said, "Recurring expenses are growing at a faster rate than recurring revenue. We're spending more than we're taking in. At some point, we are going to be hit hard. I just don't know when. It doesn't say if, it says when." So I don't know how many of you in the audience have read the budget. First couple of pages kind of scares me. Expenditures continue to grow primarily as a result of salary increases, higher operating costs, capital needs. Property tax values are not increasing. Our prince, here's a suggestion from the finance department. Work as efficiently as possible and minimize the demands upon the taxpayer. The next mayor coming in is going to be hit with a lot of things. He's going to make real, he or her's going to make strong decisions on the future because that if we have another '08 or '09, the city will be hit with some financial situation they don't want to see.
All right, thank you. For our next question, we are going to begin with District Five, and the question is this. Current city policy expels homeless people and vagrants from their encampments on public property, driving them into residential neighborhoods in North and South Knoxville. How would you deal with the growing problems of homelessness and vagrancy? We will start with Mr. Thomas. I'm sorry, we'll start with Charles Thomas over in District Five.
I wish I had an answer to that. That's something I've struggled with. Many people in the community have struggled with that. We've got dedicated people who have run social services, dedicated their lives to trying to remedy this problem or at least alleviate it. Some of it has been done. It's not as bad as it could be, but there's much more to get done. I would look at the programs that we already have, the block grants that the city gives to the, at least four different places, the Salvation Army, YWCA, CAC, and look at places like Menvilla and Flanagan in South Knoxville. Get people at the table. Again, we had a 10-year plan to end homeless. We need to take another look at it. The best thing to do is get the people back at the table, and we're probably going to have to allocate more money for this.
Thank you. Mr. Al Bally?
So my answer is, we got to do what they did with Menvilla. They took an old hotel that was a nuisance property, and they turned it into a working transitional housing program. They can stay as long as they want, or they can go as soon as they want. We can do that same thing. I can think of several properties all across this city that could be used, refurbished perfectly for that program. So what we need is a transitional housing program. I believe Menvilla costs $7 million. If we have $77 million ready to spend, I think it is an emergency. We need to spend at least $10 million to create a transitional housing program to deal with the homeless, to help the homeless. Because these are people just like you and I. We treat them like they're another, they're just someone else, but they're not. They are our family, they are our neighbors. We need to protect them, we need to serve them, and we need to make sure they have everything they can to be successful.
All right, same question, but this one goes to Amy Midas, running for at-large seat C.
Yeah, so it's, it's an awful problem, and I feel for the communities in North and especially in South Knoxville. I, I know, I remember at city council meeting when they made the decision to create the Day Space, that they felt like it was good for the homeless population there, and I think maybe it was, but it was very disturbing for the communities in the North and South Knoxville. I want to make certain that whatever decision we make in the future, we have the information and the research to make certain that the decision that we make is not going to be disruptive to those communities that surround that area along Broadway and the Day Park. We need to make certain, as far as solutions, that we have more mental health, that we have access for treatment for opioid and substance abuse, that we have more housing, and we need to make certain that we have a better police force to, to work with the homeless population in the city of Knoxville. Thank you.
All right, same question to Bob Thomas.
You know, County Commission, we worked with the Behavioral Health Center and got it open. This was to help people that were addicted, to help transition them, if you will, into regular life. People that don't want help, you can't help them. However, the homeless, you know, you, it's the whole thing, you throw money at poverty and homelessness, and unless people want to change, they're not going to change. We've got to help them change their behavior. And those that don't want help, you're going to have a hard time reaching them. We do have a building, and you talk about a transitional building. The old hospital there off Broadway has rooms with a bathroom in each single room and a bed, and it could have been a transition, transitional place for such as a, people that do want to try to get out of homelessness. So, but that's, it's, it's in people's minds is where we've got to go and help them there.
All right, thank you. Mr. Smith?
Sure thing. "Current city policy expels homeless people and vagrants from their encampments on public property, driving them into residential neighborhoods in North and South Knoxville. How would you deal with the growing problem of homelessness and vagrancy?"
Okay. Well, I may be the only person among anybody up here that's had experience in this matter. Jenny Weatherstone was here, she could tell you. In 1999 and 2000, I was the shelter manager for Volunteer Ministry Center on the corner of Gay and Jackson when you couldn't pay anybody to walk down Gay Street after dark. So I've done it, I know what works, and we have something that's working, so we don't have to recreate the wheel. Volunteer Ministry Center, in its current location at Broadway and Fifth, has placed over 1,000 people with apartments and residency. We have something that's working. It just needs to be better funded. I thought for a minute here, my opponent was heading toward advocating for a tax increase, and let me say, I will oppose any tax increase. It has to get pretty dire for me to support a tax increase. I would not do that. I think we can do better. And in terms of land for Ford Motor Plant, well, we don't have the land for a Ford Motor Plant. If you talk with the people doing economic development, that's the reason we can't get such things. So we will never be a Ford Motor Plant city.
All right, before we move on, I'm going to give you 30 seconds to respond.
Forty years, I never voted for a tax increase, and I was the one advocating when I ran for mayor. I would never raise taxes at the same situation right now. We're going to have to, the budget in the city of Knoxville is going to have to be so that everybody feels a little bit of it. You know, if everybody's unhappy, you've probably made your budget about right.
All right, thank you. Now on to Mr. Williams.
That was a lost opportunity back in the Ford Motor Plant. I know we don't have the room now. Homelessness really strikes home to me. My dad, until he was about 14, was homeless most of his life. Thank God he met my mom at 14, and her family took him in. He suffered from horrible nightmares most of his life. It'd been worse if that family hadn't taken him in. So we can look at like foster parents, something like that, boarding houses. Pastor Jaeger, when he ran the old, what was called Knox Union Rescue Mission, his goal was to have a farm, this concept where the people could come, raise their own food, and have room for cottage industry. Unfortunately, he passed away, and nothing was followed up on that. Some people, you have to have medical space for them. It's a shame we closed down Lakeshore. Some people, unfortunately, you have nothing to do with, but there are good ministries out there that are helping. The people that make my T-shirts and do a lot of things for me out in South Knoxville are helping the homeless. While people in the city talk about, they're actually doing, and that's Bob and Jenny and Reverend Lawrence, and I appreciate them so much for that. Thank you.
All right, on to Amelia Parker.
I worked at the downtown library from about 1995 to 2003 and became friends with a lot of folks living in home, homeless folks in, in downtown Knoxville. And I was a student at University of Tennessee at the time, so decided to do a project and documentary to interview them and, and get to know them better and what their circumstances were. After that experience, I really did not think I would see homelessness grow in Knoxville to the level it has. I really did not see, I did not expect that the city would essentially run homeless folks out of downtown to the point that they're living behind crystals on Chapman Highway, as one example. I just, I never really, I could never have imagined that. Housing is a human right, and there are actually court cases happening all around the country right now that are challenging the city's current policy. So we must make housing a priority.
All right, thank you. We're going to move on to candidates for at-large seat B. We'll start with David Hayes.
Yeah, it works. We good, we good. So first off, like, like Charles Al Bally said, we got to remember, these are people. So it's not okay just to make decisions about people without making efforts to include people into the conversation. And this issues, again, another reason why we need our budget to reflect human rights, and why we need to reprioritize our budget. Because right now, the option of displacing homeless people and criminalizing homeless people is not working, and it's unjust, right? We shouldn't, we shouldn't just be putting people in jail just for them to come out and just continue in the cycle. That's not an actual solution. So we do need to reprioritize this budget and make sure that we're investing in things like mental health experts. You know, so instead of calling the police on folks, we can call folks who you can actually deal with, you know, the different episodes, different things that people have going on. Making sure that we have case managers, caseworkers, you know, actually checking up on folks, making sure they get access to resources, right? Making sure we have programs for addiction, right? And making sure that we have social services and programs for folks along with housing, right? So making sure we have housing for folks, but also make sure they have access to all the resources they need to be successful.
Thank you. Ms. Testerman?
That's not an actual solution. So we do need to reprioritize this budget and make sure that we're investing in things like mental health experts. You know, so instead of calling the police on folks, we can call folks who you can actually deal with, you know, the different episodes, different things that people have going on. Making sure that we have case managers, caseworkers, you know, actually checking up on folks, making sure they get access to resources, right? Making sure we have programs for addiction, right? And making sure that we have social services and programs for folks along with housing, right? So making sure we have housing for folks, but also make sure they have access to all the resources they need to be successful.
Thank you. Ms. Testerman.
Today, I actually worked on, through our Pet Resource Center at Young Williams Animal Center, to find a solution for a homeless pet owner and housing for her three pets until she's able to move into housing in two weeks. So, I know the problem is real. We deal with it through my organization every day, but to that, you know, I say that because it's, we've got to continue to pool our resources, be it CAC, KCDC. I spent time at Karm, looking at the Berea Transitional Program for jobs. We've got to continue to expand those resources to create opportunity, jobs, transitional opportunities for homeless people, to get them off the street, to create incentives for them to be self-sustaining, for them to be independent. And I think that's, that is critical across our community. It is a, it is an issue across our entire country. So I understand that we need to continue to look at it. Look at mental health, the opioids. Law enforcement's a big part of that, and their training, and, you know, it's a big issue we'll continue to address.
All right. Thank you. We're gonna move on to at-large, seat A. We'll start with Lynn Fugit.
So, the question is, what would we do about the homeless situation? That's a large question, and it hasn't been answered yet. I think there are real concerns to neighborhoods. I hear it as I talk to people about folks being displaced into their neighborhoods. I think the power of the city, in addition to its limited resources, is the power of convening. And so I believe that the city needs to work hand-in-hand, again, updating the tenure plan, and working with the people who already are doing the heavy lifting groundwork. I also believe that, again, we've got to figure out a way to help people get off drugs, find work, so that they can be self-sufficient. That's what most people want. That's what really all people want. So we, we need to be a convenor and figure out how to pool our resources in the community and let the city spur that on.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Lomax.
My heart breaks for those that are currently experiencing this issue of homelessness. Every single day, I drive down Broadway, and I see people who are at difficult points in their lives, and most of us drive by, and sometimes we don't even look or acknowledge. I think that one of the things that we have to do, and admittedly, I'm no expert on homelessness, but we have individuals around and throughout our city that are. And so the mayor, the mayor currently has a roundtable on homelessness of different entities and organizations. They come together to look at this, and I think that we need to do a better job of empowering them, hearing what they have to say, and solutions that they have to offer. I think that we need to offer support to those that are veterans, to those that are undergoing mental crisis, and making sure that, as has previously been said, that we are not criminalizing homelessness. And so we have to train those that are responsible for meeting them at that particular point, so that we can get them the help that they need. And I think that we have to, again, just address the root cause, which is poverty.
All right. Thank you. We're gonna move on to our next question, and we're gonna stay on this side of this table for this question. We will start with at-large, seat B candidates. We'll start with Janet Testerman, and the question to you is, do you think public transportation in Knoxville needs to be improved? If so, how would you propose improving the current system?
So I definitely think public transportation is critical for our community, to continue to grow it. I do know that CAT, I think, is getting ready to get 12 new buses to that. And it's really about creating opportunity and accessibility for all members of our community to be able to get to work, to get to their jobs to and from work. And I just know that, you know, as our city continues to grow, and it's growing, that we need to address issues, you know, again, of infrastructure, and providing opportunities to, again, provide accessibility. And so I do think that we continue, I know that different people are working on different plans for mass transit, and, you know, the trolley system just started going to South Knoxville. And I fully support that transportation is key. I know it's on the top of a lot of people's radar that we'll continue to work on, look at, and learn and improve.
Thank you. Mr. Hayes?
Cool. So we definitely need to expand transportation and make sure that we have equitable transportation in Knoxville. And so we need to bring folks together to figure out what are more accessible routes, figure out how we can expand the trolley, figure out how we can expand more free fares, you know? And there's, and there's different routes that, you know, it's kind of obvious that other cities do, like having a circular route, right? So you don't have to just get on one bus, go to the, all the way to the bus station, then get on another. You know, there's, there's other options to that, and other routes we can, we can do. So I think we need to drastically improve the outreach to the community, so we can figure out better routes, and also support, also support the bus drivers. I was proud to stand with employees of CAT and the bus drivers and their union as they fought for a better contract, and I'm gonna continue fighting for their rights. Because we need, yes, we need people to be happy on the buses, we need happy bus riders, we need equitable transportation systems and routes. We also need to make sure our workers are being taken care of.
All right. Same question, but this time for candidates of at-large, seat A. We'll start with Charles Lomax.
Can you repeat the question once more, please?
Sure. Do you think public transportation in Knoxville needs to be improved? If so, how would you improve it?
All right. Thank you. Yes, I do believe that it needs to be improved. I think that we have a great system. I am excited about the app that has come out that will show you where your bus is and how long you can expect to wait. However, not everybody has a smartphone to be able to understand it or find it, and even those that do have a smartphone don't always know how to use it. And so I think that that needs to be looked at. And also, a number of our bus stops just around the city are in awkward locations. And so I live off of Valley View, and we have a number of bus stops that are literally on the side of the road with no sort of bench or no sort of covering. And I think that that's something that we need to look at, because for those that are riding the bus, which oftentimes are seniors and elderly individuals, have to wait in the elements and have to wait in awkward locations to be able to catch the transit. And additionally, I would like to see some express routes that potentially go out to the county. That is beneficial for those that have to work in far locations from where they stay, and I think that that would be of benefit to the city.
All right. Ms. Fugit.
Thank you. Is it okay just to say ditto? Because how, how can you argue with that? I, I do think we have a good bus system. I think the way to improve it is to make it more accessible and more available to people and to go more places. All that takes is money. So, that was a joke, folks, because that's really just, I mean, that's our taxes. It's, it's a prioritization. But I do think we really have to look at, if we want to deal with the homeless situation, job creation and economic empowerment, we have to find a way to let people get to where jobs are. That is probably gonna require expanding the bus routes. And we're just gonna have to take a really hard look and prioritize that, because that will have a ripple effect about the other issues that we've been talking about that are going on in the city. So, I also agree with Charles that if people are gonna ride a bus, you have to make it comfortable for them, for them to be enticed to using it.
All right. Thank you. In full disclosure, it is okay to just say ditto. It gives us more time to get to questions. All right. All right. And we're gonna move on to District Five with that question. We will start with Charles Thomas.
I'm really glad you asked that question, because transportation's been a passion for mine for years, and I think we really downplay the importance of alternative transportation and public transportation. As some of my colleagues have already says, it impacts jobs, pollution, traffic, just the whole quality of life. And I've worked on these issues. As I mentioned before, I was on the Knox Greenway Coalition for nine years, and we were promoting alternative transportation through bike lanes. I was on the CAT board, the actual CAT board, for five years, and we worked on improvements in CAT, and CAT has come a long way. You look at the new Transit Center, hybrid buses, bike racks on buses. But the other thing that I would advocate on city council is for the public to step up. The public needs to step up more and support public transportation, and, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Albaoui.
So I'll agree with Mr. David Hayes and Mr. Charles Lomax on their feelings, but I just want to add something. There was a study done by the University of Tennessee Department of Social Work, said 7% of households in the city do not have transportation, a car, and 11% in the county. So what we need to do is, we need to target those particular demographics, listen to them, see what their schedule looks like, what their needs are, and address them. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We'll now move on to at-large candidates for seat C, and we will start with Mr. Williams.
As Charles Thomas could attest, when I try to get my old car repaired, my mechanic's not on the bus route. So if they would add that, that'd be great. Also, I won't tell you how old it is. I'd like to have a senior transportation class at UT involved in this. I think the, one way to keep the young people involved in the community in projects like this, like I say, getting them involved in the government. I'd like to have their perspective on that. But I applaud the buses. Growing up, rode many times downtown. It's a wonderful thing. In fact, our neighborhood association is planning to have our community meetings on a city bus, just go around town. Maybe some other neighborhoods would like to do this. I like to have the business people at different shopping malls get in on this, have an incentive for people to take the bus, because I think it's a valuable service. And I applaud the efforts to try to get it where the jobs are. I'm a strong advocate of that. If I'm elected, I'll definitely push for that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. On to Amelia.
Thank you. I agree with what everyone is saying, and I'm happy to hear that everyone is valuing public transportation and is calling for it to be expanded, because I would, I certainly agree with that. One thing I do want to bring up, though, well, actually, I'm just gonna try to talk really fast. Two things. Very, very important in terms of poverty. I went to Karm and spoke with those folks. They have started their own shuttle service, because when folks come in and they need to go out to the Social Security Office to get an ID, and they gotta go to CAC to get an ID, and they gotta go, it's taking hours, three hours, just to get to one place. So we have to keep those folks in mind. But the other thing is, we have a limited amount of time to reduce our carbon emissions, and, and we have to commit to that as a city, and through public transportation, that's one way we can do it. There's five new all-electric buses coming online in Knoxville this year. I think that was a $3 million federal grant. I would like to see the city match that, so that we can double those numbers.
All right. Bob Thomas?
You know, there we go. All right. The, having, having public transportation is the number-one thing every city has to have. That's what makes your city, that's the number-one infrastructure thing you really have to have. And it's not so much that the bus is full, it's just that it's there and it's running. You know, we, in 2016, I headed a group that met with the Cokesbury Church in West Knoxville to try to see if we could extend the bus line past Walker Springs, because at 7 o'clock in the morning, you can't get past Walker Springs, I mean, earlier than that. And we met, and we, I found out a lot of great information on public transportation and how hard it is just to extend a line. You know, there's a lot of people that work at Cedar Bluff Road, at the fast food residence, fast food restaurants. They have to be there at 6:00. The buses from South Knoxville only get to Walker Springs at 7:00. So how do they get to work on time? We've got to work out a way, and one of those things was maybe a, a bus there at Sam's or something that could extend that. There's a lot of workers coming into West Knoxville, all those hotels, and we're gonna need to figure it out.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. I think amongst my seat C opponents, I'm the only one that's actually served on the Knoxville Transportation Authority at least two terms, and the KTA is responsible for schedules, routes, and fares. And that's what we're responsible for. Not many people see Knoxville area transit as an economic tool, but it should be. I hear people on talk, radio talking about people want to take away people's cars. Nobody wants to take away people's cars. But what we want to do is, as some people have mentioned, emissions is one thing, economic benefits is another. So we do not need to expand free fares. Nothing is free. Somebody's gotta pay for it, and that's us. So you need somebody on city council who has served on the KTA, who can make a case to get more money in the budget for Knoxville area transit and continue our transit system prospering as it is.
Well, Mr. Smith, if you want to stay standing, I'm gonna start with your group on the next question, and it is still on the topic of transportation. This question reads... I'm so sorry. I thought I was done. We're, we're moving on to Amy Midas here. Sorry, I skipped.
That's okay. I'll be fast. So I, I think it's great. We have a great resource in CAT. They do a fabulous job. We're actually, I live on Sutherland Avenue. We're gonna have one of the first electric buses going on my Route 17. I think we need to make certain we work that, to make it safe for residents to walk to bus stops, for connectivity from their houses in their neighborhoods to connect to bus stops. Most people won't walk, walk or bike more than a half a mile to a bus stop. So that's gotta be a central importance to try to make riding the bus, riding the buses successful. Also, one of the mayors has suggested that we make it free for kids under 18. I think we, I think that's a fabulous idea. I have my neighbor next door, and he's 18, and he doesn't want his license. He wants to be able to walk, ride a bike, use mass transportation, or just, you know, use Uber to get places. So we need to make certain in the future that we're keeping in mind the younger generation of Knoxvilleians that are gonna be moving here, they're gonna need access to our transportation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And to be fair, I will skip all of you at least one time, so. All right. Mr. Smith, if you want to take on this next question. The use of the electric scooter has generated a lot of controversy here in Knoxville. What are your views on whether scooters should be allowed?
Well, it's too late to ask if they should be, because they already are. But before I forget, I want to say something about what Amy said. No, we do want people riding their bikes a half a mile to the bus stop. That's, that's the whole reason for the bike racks, so you don't have to go in the neighborhood, so people can come out of their neighborhoods, ride their bike, and get on the bus. So that's the whole point. In regards to the scooters, they're a nuisance? The problem with scooters is enforcement, okay? I don't know how well city council thought this through when they agreed to allow scooters, but the problem is not the scooters, the problem is enforcement. Do they ride in the street? Do they ride on the side of a wall? Do they ride without helmets? Do they not ride without helmets? So when this thing comes up for renewal, we need to have a good conversation about where they ride, who's going to enforce it, because without enforcement, the rules mean nothing. So I'm not against scooters, but I'm for enforcement of where they ride.
I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. Can y'all hear that? What I said was, most people will not ride or walk more than a half a mile to get to a bus stop. So we may need to make certain that that connectivity from their houses is there to the bus stops.
I think part of the issue with the, with the scooters is how they were introduced to the city. They just showed up all of a sudden, and people were riding around everywhere. And they have no home. That's what I'm arguing for. It, it doesn't make much sense to me to see them lying around on the sidewalks everywhere you go. But on the other end, I, I would, I would like the, the city, you know, to take a little leadership on this issue, because I support the reason behind bringing the scooters to Knoxville. And that isn't to introduce more alternative transportation options, so that we are lowering those carbon emissions. But we need to be a part of the conversation. The public should be a part of the conversation about how we incorporate them into our community. I got off the interstate at Hall of Fame and was about to turn onto Sixth Avenue, for folks who know that area, and there were scooters coming towards me, also headed towards Sixth Avenue. And, you know, getting off the interstate, I'm not thinking about scooters. So we should have a clear sense of where they're allowed in the city.
These are nothing like the scooters I had when I was growing up. I've seen them in the middle of the street and everything. I'm just scared of this, someone's gonna get really hurt, killed on this. And, like I said, you need to have a definite rule where to ride these and everything. I think the safety is the big issue. How we enforce this is something else for the police to do and everything. Was there a demand for this in the first place? Just don't understand it all. But the safety, that's what I'm concerned about. I don't see somebody hurt.
So I had this discussion with my 16-year-old daughter, and she said she wouldn't support me if I said I wasn't gonna support scooters. So, but I do. I'm part of BikeWalk Knoxville Advisory Council, and I do support any type of measure, alternative forms of transportation forms of transportation, to get people out and not using their car. I do have concerns about where the scooters are being placed and blocking sidewalks. I feel comfortable that we can work through it, but I do support keeping the scooters, and I know my daughter will be appreciative that I said that.
I didn't hear what you said. I thought we wanted people to ride bicycles and have bicycle lanes, and get healthy, and things like that. And then I see all of a sudden these scooters all over town. They're not going to like me. I think we're making other people rich. I think we're littering our sidewalks. I think we've got people downtown that are having a good time in all the restaurants and the bars, and think it's a brilliant idea to get on a scooter with no helmet and go down the road and face a 5,000-pound vehicle. Hey, it's insane. And then somebody's going to be killed, and I don't like it. I don't think we should have. And I've got 30 more seconds to tell you how much I don't like it. I just think there's a better way of helping people get around on our streets, unless they don't get somebody... One person's life is not worth whatever money we're making off of that.
All right. We're going to ask that same question. We're working now, so that's good. All right. At-large seat B candidates, we will...
So it's funny how polarizing the scooters are. Honestly, I think investing in alternative transportation is good, is what we need to do as a city. But I think we should be investing in alternative transportation throughout the whole city. And there's other things other than scooters. There's like, you know, there's bike collectives in place that will make a bike for you if you need, you know? Why aren't we investing in those? Why aren't we investing in actual, regular, working people and helping, you know, and helping regular Knoxvilleians out? Because historically, we've put all this investment into downtown, making it a tourist investment, and I'm not against scooters per se, you know? But I think the intention, you know, partly intention, yes, alternative transportation, yes, but the intention of just focusing downtown folks, just making, just focusing for tourists and everything, I'm not really with that. I want to see everyday Knoxvilleians have a better time getting around. And scooters can be a part of that, but the community needs to be a large, a much larger part of this conversation. So I'm excited to organize things like town halls and go door-to-door and things like that to ask, like, what do you think about the scooters, and how else do you think the city can invest in alternative transportation?
All right. Ms. Testerman.
Well, I'm kind of straddling the fence on this one, but, you know, I do, I'm all about innovation. I'm all about trying new things. And, you know, I've had my frustrations with the scooters and people not. I do think enforcement is critical, that we do need to come up with some ways and some measures to enforce the scooters. You know, Nashville just took a step back, and they're redirecting until they come up with a better plan. And I do think safety is paramount. So again, I don't know that we're reinventing the wheel across other communities that have done this, but I do think we need to take a serious look as far as the safety and the enforcement. And, you know, again, I do promote alternative forms of transportation and innovation, but we need to do it right and keep everybody safe.
All right. Same question for candidates at-large seat A. Ms. Fugit, where do you stand?
Ditto. What I would say is really, I'm kind of straddling the fence, too. I understand they're fun. I was in Pete's coffee shop the morning, they went live and watched three people, had the best time, just zipping up and down the road. So I think for a lot of people, they're recreation, they're not necessarily just alternative transportation. I do think that if we're going to keep them, we have to do a much better job at enforcing where they can be, and we've got to figure out a way that they turn off if they go on a sidewalk. Because if they can geocode them, maybe they can make them turn off on concrete, because that's what I hear most people's frustration with, is they go downtown, they're trying to enjoy downtown, and people are not obeying the rules. The problem with enforcement is law enforcement probably has more serious things to deal with, and I'm not sure that's a burden that they can also be put on, be put on them. That was a backwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lomax.
As we expect with our bicyclists to obey the rules of the road, I think that scooter riders ought to do the same. And I will simply say this and sit down, I support scooters.
Wow. All right. Well, same question for candidates for District Five. We'll start with Mr. Al Bowley.
Personally, I'm against the scooters, but it's not about what I want personally. This isn't about creating a Knoxville for Charles, despite how many of us are running this election. This is about creating a Knoxville for all. So what I think I would need to do to make this decision, listen to the people, look at the data of the money that it's making the city, is it a good investment? And look at the safety data. How many traffic accidents are resulting because of this? We have to look at the numbers. That's what I would do to make this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas.
Yes. Again, I'm a huge proponent of alternative transportation, but on the scooters, I'm keeping an open mind until the pilot program plays out. I've got to be honest at this point, mainly negative. The question in my mind is just how much, how practical are they are as far as providing public transportation? The downtown footprint of Knoxville is quite small. We've got the trolleys, we've got bicycles, and you can walk. So I'm not sure as public transportation, they're actually serving a practical goal. There is problems with them being on the sidewalks, they're not following the rules, everybody knows that. They're being left on the sidewalks sometimes, that's impeding pedestrians. But two things, I've heard from some sources that they are bringing in some revenue to Knoxville, because they'll call up the city and say, "Do you have scooters in town?" So you weigh that out some. The main thing is they're apparently just a lot of fun, you know? And people are having a hoot on these scooters, but they're on the sidewalk, and they're annoying everybody else.
We'll have to leave it at that. Annoying and fun. All right. Next question. We're going to start with our candidates for at-large seat A. The question is, how would you address the issue? Did I skip anybody? Okay. When y'all start looking up at me, I get nervous. All right. How would you address the issue of gentrification along Magnolia Avenue corridor? So we will start with you, Ms. Fugit.
Well, that's an easy one. I'm kidding, people. Y'all got to lighten up. How would you deal with gentrification on Magnolia Avenue? That can't be answered in one minute. I think part of how you help the people who are there is figuring out a way for the city to offer some sort of loan program for owner-occupied folks who want to create their business and keep it on Magnolia Avenue. When we were doing affordable housing, we would often make second mortgages that were deferred payments till about 10 years after somebody had been in the house. We're going to have to do that to help local people keep their businesses there, because as a banker, I know you cannot buy a building, renovate it, bring it up to code, and it appraised for enough for a bank to give you the loan. So we're going to have to figure out a way as a city to help bridge that gap financing.
All right. Mr. Lomax.
I think we first have to start by recognizing that this is a real issue and concern for those that live in the community. I think often we hear the issue, and we often just glaze by it. But I think that it goes back to both smart growth and development. Every homeowner, every individual that has property wants that property and value to rise. But we have to be smart about how we do it. There's a difference between growth and development. And often what we see is that in communities, especially in East Knoxville, we have the development that takes place, which is streets, infrastructure, buildings, property. But we don't have the growth that goes along with that, growth of population, growth of jobs, growth of wages. And when you have development, but you don't have growth, that's what leads to gentrification. And so we need to make sure that with the growth of the community, that we're also growing wages, we're growing jobs, and helping those individuals to be able to get the access to the money to afford the changes that are taking place in their community and where they live.
All right. Thank you. Our next, same question for our District Five candidates. We'll start with Mr. Thomas.
Commissioned together, and his views and mine are very similar on that. The frustration about gentrification is it's a deeper problem. It's about wage inequality and distribution of wealth, and those things are national and state problems. There's a limited amount that a city can do on that. That doesn't mean we shouldn't try to do everything we can, but we need to face the facts that you're talking about, these inequalities in wealth and inequality, in wealth and wages. One thing we can have done and continue to do is with the Affordable Rental Development Fund, that's something the city is being funded, and that's a practical thing that has been helping. And we just need to look for more solutions on this, and I'm completely open to input from the community on that, or public ideas, but it's a really tough problem, but I'm here to listen.
All right. Mr. Al Bowley.
So the first thing I think we've got to do is we've got to protect the people living there right now. How do we do that? We've got to look out for those on fixed incomes, those working minimum-wage jobs. We've got to create a program, the county already has one, for property tax relief if you're over 65 years or older. We need to make sure that our elderly people on fixed income, social security, that they have the opportunity to keep that home in their possession, in their family's possession long after they pass away. And people who inherit their homes, we've got to use the homemakers program that currently exists and make sure it's more accessible to the people working minimum-wage jobs, so that they can afford to keep that home in their family. We have to use the Affordable Rent Trust Fund and expand these programs to make sure they are more accessible to the people who need them the most, the most vulnerable. But I think the easiest way to start is the property tax relief for the people on fixed income. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And candidates, I forgot to mention, this is the last question. Once we wrap up with this question, you'll have an opportunity for closing remarks. All right. Our candidates for at-large seat C, let's start with Amelia Parker.
Yes, this is an important question, because as I mentioned in my introduction, we have this growing gap between the haves and the have-nots, between the wealthy and the middle class. So imagine that gap between the wealthy and those living in poverty in Knoxville. The only way that we're going to address it is if we do it directly, through city policy and budgets. There have actually been some really good ideas offered from this panel today, making direct investments in business owners along Magnolia. And let me say, gentrification's happening all around town. I just heard about the Fountain City Diner closing, because their rent for their space is raised, is going to raise about 60%, because they think they can make more money now that Knoxville's booming. So we have to pay attention to this everywhere, and we have to make those loans available to business owners who've made the commitment to the city, and we also have to rebuild our black business sector. Don't have time to talk about that? Let's talk about it more.
All right. Mr. Smith.
Is this the last question, did you say?
It's the last question, but when you're done, you have a closing.
So by far, it's the most emotional issue that we've talked about tonight. If you lived in Knoxville before urban renewal, then you know why it is an emotional issue. If you came after urban renewal, it will not have the same effect on you as it does to me and perhaps others in this room. You know, it's a tough call, and certainly one that I cannot even begin to explain, I can only share what I feel about it. It's the problem that we have with growth. That's why planned growth is so important. That's why it's so important that you have people on city council that have some historical perspective, and also, on the other hand, vision as to where we're going. That's what elections are about. I cannot begin to explain gentrification. I can only tell you how I feel about it, but as Amelia said, it's not just in one part of town, but in certain parts of town, it hurts more than others. As Charles said, how do we raise the economics of people up to where they can adapt to the change?
Thank you. All right. Amy Midas, where do you stand on this issue?
So, you know, gentrification is right. It is happening everywhere. The improvements that have happened along Magnolia, I hope, will provide more opportunity for housing along the corridor. I want to make certain that the businesses that are there continue to stay there and have the resources that they know, they need to be able to sustain themselves, as well as community members that are in the Magnolia area, that they have the opportunity to maybe start also a new business along Magnolia. You know, one thing that REICO will do, whether it passes or doesn't pass, is it will allow more residential housing along Magnolia. And I know that we see that some people who rent in some neighborhoods like Park Ridge, Cold Spring, Chilhaway, are being displaced, because people are now selling those houses, and they've been renting for a long time. So being able to provide more rental housing and rental assistance would help them at least stay there in the community, but it's going to be a long problem that we're going to have to continue to work and be attentive to.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Thomas.
Thank you. You know, when I was four years old, my parents moved to Knoxville. We lived on Magnolia Avenue. My dad ran a gas station at Chestnut-McCalla. Later on, he had business on McCalla Avenue. I rode my bike up and down Magnolia Avenue for years. 37914 was my zip code till I went off to college. This area means a lot to me, Burlington, all of Magnolia. I think as far as gentrification is concerned in that area, people that live there now, I'd like to see people that live there for a certain amount of time in that area, their property taxes be frozen until they move, sell, whatever. Same thing, some sort of rent control in that area, so that you don't have people that are renting that are forced to move out in that area. We've got to take care of the people that have been there for a long, long time and taking care of that area. It's an important area to me. I will never turn my back on that area. It's been such a big part of my life.
All right. Mr. Williams.
I echo what Mr. Thomas said. A lot of fond memories in that area. Growing up, it was a wonderful trip for my parents and grandparents to go out to the Park Theater, Chilhaway Park, Kay's Ice Cream. I can remember two houses that are still there in Chilhaway Park, Bed and Breakfast. And my dad would always say, "David, look and see if this car's from Michigan or Indiana." It was wonderful. And I think we could look at a lot of features now, possibly mixed use, something like that. I think we have people that appreciate the history and the importance of that wonderful community. And we could actually start doing some things at Chilhaway Park, and then on Magnolia from the bus terminal, and sort of meet in the middle. Keep going, but there are people that are interested in the community, and that's what's important. That needs to be, an area that needs to be preserved, and I think there's some good ideas that we can use. And I'd take a look at mixed use, probably the first one, but we need to work closely with the community out there. And I have a special place in my heart for the people that are restoring old homes. They don't need to be penalized if you can't get a light fixture that's exactly like one. It costs $700, can one that looks the same but $100? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Our last group to answer this question are at-large seat B candidates. Mr. Hayes.
So I think Mr. Smith was actually right to relate gentrification, especially on the east side, to urban renewal, what they would call NIGO removal, because that's what's happening right now. As of right now, if you look at the city's contracts, less than 1%, I believe $50 million, less than 1% of that goes to black businesses. Less than 1%. That's an injustice. So this is an opportunity to make sure that we invest in black businesses. It should be black businesses and the folks who have historically lived there who benefit from the development along Magnolia. But along with gentrification, along with urban renewal, modern-day urban renewal, we've got to understand it's bigger than race. It's bigger than race and includes class. We have the entirety of the working class being affected by this. When I say working class, I mean people of low income, low income, and people of middle income with high expenses, on the south side, north side, even out McCannsville parts southwest, right? We're seeing the working class get pushed out of their neighborhoods and communities. So this is a big issue. We need to make sure we're empowering people to stay in their communities and have a say in how the neighborhood is developed and changes.
All right. Ms. Testerman.
Several months ago, I sat in a meeting in the East Knoxville Business Association at the Urban League, and what was so cool, really, was they were soliciting feedback about what businesses they would like to see in some of the vacant buildings along Magnolia Avenue, and that was so encouraging and inspiring to me. And I think the investment that we're making along Magnolia corridor right now is really, you know, it's about, again, providing investment to create jobs, to create opportunities, and to also keep with the integrity of that neighborhood. and to also keep with the integrity of that neighborhood. And, you know, at the same time, I just think that, you know, it's about the investment that these long-term business owners have had, these long-term residents, this is investment for them. This is equity that they have put decades in that will aid them in retirement, pay for education, pay for healthcare. And so to that point, this is really an opportunity for these people to realize a long-term investment in their community and to watch it thrive.
Thank you. Everyone answered the question of gentrification. All right. Good. Well, before we get to your closing remarks, I just want to thank the candidates. It's not easy answering a lot of these questions in 60 seconds, but we got through seven questions. There's 11 of you, so that's 77 one-minute responses plus your opening remarks. So I think we covered a lot of ground. I think the voters certainly have learned a lot tonight, so I think it was a success. So let's wake them up before they give their closing remarks and give our candidates a round of hands. All right. We will start with our closing remarks with District Five, Mr. Charles Thomas.
I want to thank you all for coming out and being so attentive. I'm running for District Five. I've lived in that neighborhood since 1992. It's close to my heart, and I'll be primarily responsible for District Five. However, every councilman is responsible for the entire city. That's why we run citywide at the end. So I've been involved in city processes. I've already done a litany of my experience. I was on city council before. There won't be much of a learning curve for me. That doesn't mean new issues aren't coming up and I'll have to stay abreast of these. But I know how the system works. I feel very comfortable doing the work on city council, more comfortable than I do campaigning, actually. But another thing that's really motivated me is two of the biggest issues in the entire city right now are in my neighborhood. It's what to do with the old St. Mary's site and what to do about the fire that happened off of Morelia Avenue. And I really want your help. I would like to have this office to be able to work practically on those issues. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Al Bowey.
All right. So the most important thing you can do as a citizen is vote. This is your opportunity. This election is historic. No matter what happens, we will have the most diverse city council in the history of the city of Knoxville. I am a part of the Knoxville City Council Movement. We are carrying on a legacy, a historic legacy of human rights advocacy in East Tennessee. And that's what we want to build on. That's what I want to build on. That's why I chose to work as a children's attorney. That's why I'm choosing to run for city council for the fifth district seat right now. So what I want you to do is I want you to listen, and I want you to investigate. Look at each of these candidates, see what they have done in their past. See if what they're saying will hold up in the future. I know what I'm saying. I know what I'm planning to do. I'm planning to advocate for you. I want to look out for your best interests. I want to make sure you and your family's needs are met. Like I said when I started this off, I want for my neighbor what I want for myself. And it should be that simple. Says in the Bible, the whole of the law can be summed up in one word: love your neighbor as you love yourself. That's how government should run.
All right. Thank you so much. Those are your candidates for Seat, for the fifth district. All right. Now, closing remarks from our candidates for the at-large Seat A position. We will start with Lynn Fugit.
Thank you. I'm running for at-large Seat A. And again, the reason I'm running is because the issues before us are complex. They will take a lot of experience, a lot of thoughtful reflection, and a lot of listening to all the citizens, even those that aren't here tonight, who may have different views than some of you in this room, as we build Knoxville. What I know is a rising tide lifts all boats. Everyone in Knoxville deserves a wonderful life and a wonderful experience. The city of Knoxville has a role to play in that, but it cannot do it all. The city is primarily responsible for creating a budget, setting a tax rate, being the beer board, and dealing with zoning. So a lot of those issues come before us that will be reflected in what our values are. I think the city of Knoxville values, values all its citizens, and I would be honored to serve you.
All right. Mr. Charles Lomax.
Again, thank you all so very much for coming tonight. It is a delight to be able to stand up here and to see so many smiling faces as we share our vision for Knoxville. Again, my name is Charles Lomax. I'm a candidate for city council at large, Seat A. And I'm running for this office because I love the city of Knoxville, but even more importantly, I see what we have the potential of being and becoming. I'm running because for too long, we've had too many individuals within this city who have felt as though their voice is not being heard. I'm running because I believe that I have the experience and the tools that are necessary in order to make sure that we have a city council that is accountable and helping to move our city forward. For seven years, I've represented each and every one in this room on the Metropolitan Planning Commission, and we did our best to ensure that our city and our county had the resources that they need as we go forth in the planning and zoning and development of our city. And I would appreciate your support. I ask that you would continue to be active and involved in the process. And I believe that come Election Day, that if you elect me, we'll be able to have a great city.
All right. Thank you. So those are your candidates for the at-large Seat A position. Now on to at-large Seat B. We'll start with Janet Testerman.
So I'm running for at-large Seat B because I believe in economic growth, and that means supporting our entrepreneurs. It means supporting, recruiting new business. And with that comes infrastructure, zoning, housing concerns that we have to address. I believe in pathways to our future because I believe that we've got to have a long-term strategic plan for our city. We have a lot of leadership changes going on across our community and in key leadership roles right now. And I also believe in inclusivity. We need a city that works for everyone. We need platforms where our citizens can share their concerns. I said earlier, this is not a cookie-cutter approach. You know, I hope to earn your vote, and, you know, we live in the best city ever. And I say, "Let's make the best better." And my number is 250-4860. I'm here to listen. I'm here to be accessible. I think I can bring, and I know I can bring, the leadership, the experience, the knowledge base to this role on city council to make the best quality of life for all of us.
All right. Thank you. David Hayes.
Again, my name is David Hayes. I'm a proud member of the city council movement. I'm glad to be running in at-large, I'm Seat B. And a big reason why I'm running is because Knoxville does not work for all communities. It doesn't work for all people. It hasn't worked for black and brown communities, and it hasn't worked for working-class communities. We need a transformation. We need a Knoxville that is guaranteed and intentional and determined to work for all people. Y'all sense my passion. Y'all see me up here. I'm not somebody who's supposed to be in front of you. I'm not somebody who's supposed to be in the political process. But we need to change that. My parents wasn't, and my parents wasn't in politics. My folks didn't come from development. I don't come from a wealthy background. I come from a working-class background. And that's why I wanted Knoxville to work for everybody. So all of us can have good jobs and living wages. Everybody can have affordable housing. Everybody can have access to a safe and healthy community. And everybody can have access to democracy. Because we all deserve a say in how our city government works.
All right. Those were your candidates for at-large Seat B. Now on to at-large Seat C. We will start with Amy Midas.
Hi. I just want to thank each of you for being here today. It's been a great pleasure being in front of you and talking about my ideas for the city of Knoxville and the vision. You know, I grew up in Houston, Texas. I was born in '68. And the periods of '70s and '80s in Houston were a lot of change. And I really feel, now that I'm in Knoxville, that I have a sense of community that I never had before amongst all the change in Houston. I'm a consensus-building leader, and I'm someone that really values communities of all kinds, not just neighborhoods, but property owners, businesses, churches. And I want to be there to make certain that those communities continue to grow and prosper in Knoxville. Because I think that's what makes our town so special. So thank you for being here and for taking interest right now, and this is an exciting time. And being involved in your local elections is probably the most important thing you can do for the life of yourself and your family. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Bob Thomas.
First of all, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for doing this. I really appreciate everybody being here as well. I appreciate my wife of 34 years putting up with me for this long. You know, being involved in Knoxville is not something new for me. When I was 21 years old, there was not going to be a Christmas parade, and I put the parade together and chaired it for 20 years. And just something as simple as that. I went on and had the hockey team in Knoxville for eight years, brought in $25 million of business into the economy. I was on county commission, vice chairman one year. We put together incredible budgets, kept taxes low. I will be physically responsible. We're not going to spend more money than we take in. Now, if you like somebody that likes to spend more money than they take in, I'm probably not your guy. The other thing, I will be accessible. I did 45 monthly meetings in a row. I will continue that on city council. You will be able to find me every month and come and sit down and talk and tell me exactly what your concerns are. I'd appreciate your vote. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Hubert Smith.
I too thank the League of Women Voters and the other organizations, too many for me to remember, that helped put this on. A couple of things just in closing. Gentrification, opportunities for housing don't mean too much if you can't afford it, so I want to keep that in mind as well. I promise you, I will not raise your taxes only under dire circumstances, and I'm hoping we'll never see dire circumstances. Janet, have you trademarked that "Make the Best Better"? Could I use that? I like that. Only signs, okay. But I want to thank you all for this opportunity. I hope I've said enough to distinguish myself from my other opponents' fine people. It's not a moral statement, it's a political statement. I think I'm the best qualified candidate for at-large Seat C. And people vote for two reasons. You're mad about something, or you like the person. I want you to like me. I'm a nice guy. Vote for me. Thank you.
All right. All right. David Williams.
Well, Betsy Pickle used to write for the New Sentinel, said, "David, you're too nice a guy for politics." Well, we need nice guys in politics. I've enjoyed working with people of many different ages and backgrounds over 40 years, saying the tutoring, and I can bring that to city council. I can sit down with you, work with you, no matter what your background is. I want to be accessible. Whether I win this election or not, and I hope to win, I'm still going to work for people in the community. You'll see me walking down the street one day. You'll see, "Who's that crazy man in the 95-degree weather?" But I'm interested in helping people solve their problems. It's that pure and simple. I want you to be able to be comfortable, if you go before a city council, that you be involved in a two-way conversation. It's not that way now. When you make your speech, you sit down, you're out of it unless you're called upon. I've rarely seen that happen. That's not right. You should be able to ask questions and have them answered. I'll work hard for you, and I'll be accessible. I've got a Facebook page, David Williams for City Council. Call me 256-1820. Let me start working on your problems now, why wait?